Members and city staff, I hope everyone's enjoying their summer so far. We will start tonight with the first item on the agenda, which is our roll call. So when Ms. Ferrans, when you're ready, if you could please call the roll for us tonight.
Mr. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Absent.
Mr. McCauley?
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Here.
Mr. Desmond?
Here.
Ms. Chambers?
Here.
And Mr. Bassenbrook?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let's move on now to our second item, which is reading from our statement of procedure. And I will turn to my immediate left, our newly elected vice chair, Mr. Desmond. If you could read the statement of procedure whenever you're ready.
The zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by the Troy City Council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a literal, or relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Applicants must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the approved agenda. When an item is called, the chairperson will verify that the applicant is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. If there is less than a full board, seven members present at a meeting, an applicant may request a postponement, so his or her request can be heard by a full board. If there is no request for a postponement, the applicant will then be given an opportunity to address the board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the applicant makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairperson will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand, and when recognized by the chairperson, come to the podium. The speaker should identify themselves with name and address, indicate their relation to the property in question, i.e. next door neighbor, live behind the property, et cetera, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request, and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairperson. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairperson to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairperson will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a move, a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to Oakland County Circuit Court.
All right, thank you, Mr. Desmond, for reading our statement of procedure. Now we can move along to our third item, which is approval of our meeting minutes from last month's meeting in May. Unless there's any discussion, can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, motion for Mr. Fox, seconded by Mr. Eisenbacher. Unless there's discussion on the motion, I think Ms. Ferrans are ready for a vote on the motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Bassenbrook?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
And Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
All right, meeting minutes from last month's meeting have been approved. Now we'll look at tonight's agenda, and unless there's any discussion on the agenda as printed, we can go ahead and consider that finalized. Seeing nothing from my colleagues, we will move along to item number five, which is the sole matter that we have for us tonight on appeal. That is, as it relates to 4928 Park Manor. And we will start with Mr. Carlisle, I believe, if you could, when you're ready, present on this, on this matter.
Yes, thank you and good evening to the board. My name is Ben Carlisle, Carlisle Wortman Associates. We are the city's planning consultants, so it's nice to be here. It's my first time in front of this board. I have big shoes tonight to fill for Paul, but I will try my best to do him justice. The site in question tonight is located at 4928 Park Manor. It's part of the Parkview on Beach neighborhood. Parkview on Beach was approved as a cluster development, and if I remember correctly, I believe it's either our first or one of our first cluster developments that we've approved in the city. And essentially, what a cluster development does is it's, is a development technique that we have utilized in the zoning ordinance that reduces lot sizes and reduces and relaxes setbacks in order to preserve more common open space from the development. The intent is to, again, preserve common open space, but allow some design flexibility to preserve natural features and reduction of infrastructure. So it's a tool, a development technique that's been pretty well utilized throughout the city in recent years. We do note that in all cluster developments, the rear yard setback is 25 feet. And the applicant tonight is requesting a variance to encroach 10 feet into the required 25-foot setback. The requested variance is located on that rear side of that property and abuts the common open space for this proposed development. The applicant's requesting the 10-foot encroachment to build a deck. The deck would be 10 feet deep by 25 feet in width. In the application, the applicant notes that there's some exceptional characteristics of the site, including topography. Where they want to locate the proposed deck is approximately seven feet off grade and outlets from a kitchen for the proposed home. And they also note that there is a drain in the rear of the property that also would not allow them to do an at-grade patio, which would have been allowed on the ordinance. We note that the applicant has submitted a letter from adjacent neighbors, as well as the homeowners association, and they raised no objection to the application. It's also worth noting that a similar application was submitted for a variance request in 2021. That application was denied. However, we do note that the deck proposed in that application was significantly larger than the deck proposed tonight. That deck was 15 feet in depth and 30 feet wide, so a total of 450 square feet. This deck, again, is 10 feet in depth and 18 feet in width, so 180 square feet. Mr. Chairman, that's my report. If any questions, I'll be free to answer any.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Mr. McCauley?
Where, where are you getting the fact that the topography of this makes it unable to be able to put a patio on there?
I note two things. One, that's what the applicant noted in their report. I also note that due to the, you can see there, the seven-foot-six drop in height, they couldn't, they couldn't put a patio at grade that would service off the kitchen that they're located where they want to put the deck. So for that, that's the topography I was speaking of.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the picture. I'm kind of going back and forth there.
So you can see where they want to put the deck is adjacent, that's the kitchen outlet there, and where they want to put the deck would be flush with that, that exterior location there. And it's seven, seven and a half feet or so off the grade at the base there. And so obviously, they couldn't put a patio that would also service that outlet for the kitchen.
Oh, so they, yeah, they would have to have steps down to the, to the patio, not just, not, not just a patio. Well, okay, all right, thank you. Answered my question.
Any other questions, Mr. Fox?
So I have a question, just looking at the picture that you've got pulled up there. I, I feel like something went wrong, but I don't know enough about the process of this building getting designed the way that it is. Is that the only back door out of the property?
I believe so, and I think the applicant could answer that, but believe so, yes.
Okay, so if that is the only back door out of the property, what city processes has this building already gone through, I guess is my question? Because at some point, it looks like somebody made a decision to build the only back door 7.6 feet off of the ground and build the house to the setback line.
So a little history about the clusters.
Okay, yeah, 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 please.
So as I noted, this was the first cluster project that went through. So we've learned a lot from processes, as well as the applicants have learned a lot on how to, how to build within. My understanding was there was a building envelope that was approved as part of the planning commission approval, as well, ultimately went to the city council for their approval. It established that 25-foot. The, the builder at the time thought that in addition to the setback, that they could build a deck within that 25 feet. So they planned, not approved by the planning commissioner of the council, they planned on having a deck being constructed and encroaching within that 25 feet. When they came to the building department to get approval for the deck for the permit, it was caught at that time and noted, you can't build a deck that's in the setback. They then at one point, and this is from memory, so the zoning board may be aware. They, they came at one point, I believe, and tried to get a variance for all the properties in this particular development, or a cluster development, and that was not approved. And so then each house subsequently has, some have come in for variances subsequent to that. I will tell you, we've learned from that experience, and we tell the developers going in, you have a 25-foot setback. If you want to do a deck, a sunroom, something of that nature, you need to incorporate as part of your building envelope that gets approved by the planning commission and the city council. So there may, there was a disconnect between what the builder thought he was able to do, the elevation that was ultimately approved by the building department and constructed, and I guess where we're at today.
Okay.
Hope that clarifies your, your question.
I, I appreciate the clarification, thank you.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yeah, looking at a newer map on, on Google Maps of the subdivision, it looks like the back of all these prop, all these houses that were built, were built completely flat and right at the 25-foot line. So it seems like this entire subdivision was set up so that the, if they don't have an at-grade exit, or within the two and a half feet that the builder's letter noted for a height of a patio, they can't really utilize the rear of their, their house unless they have a stairs that just immediately goes down off of their house.
I, I think that's correct. It looks, it appears that most of the homes, if not all the homes, were built right to that 25-foot setback, and so you can't encroach a structure into that. You can use it for lawn or recreation uses, or accessory structures, play sets, et cetera. But if you want a structure, you either, you'd have to get a variance from the zoning board of appeals, or, I mean, I guess the developer could come back and then try to amend the whole cluster, if you can go through the process of the planning commission and the city council, but they have chosen not, not to do that.
Great, any other questions for, not seeing any? Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Appreciate that. At this point, we will invite the applicant for 4928 Park Manor. Sir, if you'd like to step forward, if you could state your name and your relationship to the property, and anything additional relating to the statement of practical difficulty or anything else, like to let the board know, feel free, sir.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. My name is Ambuj Mathur. I am, me and my wife own the, the property that's being discussed, the 4928 at Park Manor Drive. I think a lot of us have all been sent through the, the planning summary of, you know, why we are here. Obviously, we've tried to work around what we've been built. I think I'll add, add on, like he said, that the builder had the assumption, and they kind of told us as well, that you can build a deck. They are charged us a premium price for that lot, because we had the open space in the back, as well as the elevation. So we paid more money with the assumption that, and actually, there's communication from the builder that you could build a deck out and enjoy the, the green space behind you. So we opted for that lot. We were one of the earlier families that bought a lot in that subdivision, so we got to pick that spot. We could have gone anywhere else, had we known that we were restricted by deck, but they promised, or they communicated that you could do a deck and then build it, so we picked that lot. And like he said earlier, we did come in for a variance back in January of 2021, and it was denied at that point, and suggested, you know, just do like a three-foot landing area, come down and then build a patio. And over last summer, we did contract a couple contractors, like the three contractors, to see if we can get a patio built. And looking at the grading, I think the pictures, one of the pictures that was flashed up earlier, there are two drains that are there, even though one of them on the, on the, on the left of the back, I'm looking at the house that side. All the water that comes down from that, that corner house and our house actually drains right through our backyard to the drain that's on the far right side of the property. So we've had issues with waters collecting in the back. We've had the builder and, and their landscaper come out two summers in a row to fix that problem, and it's still not resolved. Once the last home was built, they had to do some more work on that piece to make sure the water goes to the outside drain on the left, but it still kind of flows through our properties. Anytime you have heavy rains, our backyard is all damp, and it takes a few days for it to, to dry out. So with that, the contractors are saying, you know, you build a brick patio, you can have uneven surfaces within, within a few months. You do a concrete patio, you're going to have cracks in it, because it's going to be uneven, it's going to keep moving around. And like you said, like I said, the picture showed it clearly, right? The drains are going through our backyard to the corner spot. Considering the other homes in the property, there are 20 homes in that subdivision, eight of them have actually gone through and built patios and kind of, you know, worked around what they have, but they're not as high as we are. I think ours is probably the second or the third, or second highest or the top highest grading off the, the grade. So there's only three or four other houses that have the same problem. Because last time we were here, I think that was a concern, the city didn't want to go approve 17 to 20 variances because of all these problems that the, the builder kind of put on us. It's not that many homes, right? Even if there's one or two homes that come through a variance, it'll make life a lot easier for us to be able to enjoy our home that we've paid a lot of money for and be able to get out. And like I said in my application, we have kids, we have grandparents, my parents, my wife's parents that stay with us. Every time they have to go out, you have to kind of walk around to go out to actually enjoy your backyard. It'd be, we tried to work with the patio design, it's not going to work. We're looking at something else to be able to enjoy the, the space that we have. The point of the cluster homes was to give more green space to enjoy, which we are not able to do right now. And like you stated earlier, it's just top, top, topography, the build, the way it's built out, we have no other option but to request, again, to, to allow for variance.
Thank you. Do any board members have questions for the applicant? Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes, on page 19 of our agenda, there's a letter from, it appears from one of your, the three builders that you mentioned? So he listed three reasons. One is the proximity of the drain going through the backyard, which you talked about. Then the kitchen door height being eight feet above the ground, so a raised patio cannot be built for that height.
Yes.
Even if they did like concrete or whatever patio, they, they don't space them up that high?
Correct. The height, and because it's going to get so heavy, that it's going to add on to the problem with the, the soft sand around, or the softer grading around that area.
Okay.
So the weight of that would be a problem, again, and the stability, it's not going to be stable enough.
And then that's the third point, the slope from the back towards the drain is too steep, so he's not able to put footers in to support.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I have a question. Yeah, so Mr. Eisenbacher just mentioned the issue with the drainage that was identified by one of the contractors. So for the proposed deck, is that not an issue with the deck? The drainage issue, being able to, I guess, put the, put the beams down and, and put that structure up, is that not a concern with, with the drain issues that you're identifying?
That's correct. From what, what the contractors have told us, the way the pillars go for the, the deck, it would not get affected by the drain, and drain, the water can still flow the way it's flowing right now. It won't affect, and then it won't affect the structure of the property either, or the, the deck, because it's just beams coming down into the ground, as opposed to something that's relying on the ground to be flat.
Okay. And just, just a quick follow-up. So for your property, are there other properties in that subdivision that have a similar drainage problem that you're aware of? Or is that like the drain that's sort of common to those houses around you?
I think it's just our house, that because we have those two leading to the big common area in the back. So it's the water that's flowing, it's coming through, through our backyard. There may be one other house that's to our left that may have the same issue potentially, but I don't believe there's any other homes that have the same problem.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Desmond, do you have a question?
Just had a quick statement regarding decks versus patios. Typically, there's a leaderboard or something that will anchor the deck to the property, and that supports the majority of the weight. And posts are just a, a support for the, the outer leverage from it, when it's really anchored to the house, that doesn't occur with a concrete patio. So grade is a much bigger issue with concrete, because it can settle in in a way that a deck would not.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions for the applicant? I don't see any questions, sir. Thank you for presenting. It's good to hear from you. We will move along then to our time of public comment, so I'll open up the public hearing. And I'm not seeing anyone in the audience coming forward, so I do, but I do believe we have a few written letters regarding the application. Mr. Desmond, if you want to either read or give a summary of what we have from, from the, the public?
Do. The, there's not a ton of content in them. Basically, there are two neighbors here for 4911 Park Manor Drive, in, in support of the variance for the deck, also 4928 Park Manor, also in support. We have no objection to the proposed request. In addition, it was actually communications, these are new, newer additions. There was also, let's see, next door neighbors, you know, actually offer the 4958 Park Manor in support. The actual Parkview Beach Association is in support, so the association themselves, and that is it. So five, five messages altogether, one of which being the association.
All right, thank you. I think that will conclude the public hearing, so close the public hearing. And at this point, bring it back to the board for discussion and deliberation on the variance request. Anyone cared to be recognized? Mr. McCauley?
Couple items. First of all, we've had three homes from this area come in to us regarding wanting to add decks, and all three of them have been denied. Even one took it to circuit court, and the circuit court found in our favor that we are within our boundaries to deny them a, a deck. I looked at this property originally, and I had issues with what happened there, just like Mr. Fox was talking about. And basically, from my perspective, this builder who's been in our community for a long time is well aware of what he can and can't do, and built this house to its maximum potential for the most money he could make, and was not concerned beyond that point for what happened with decks, or no decks, or patios, or anything else. So I think that's one of the problems that we ran into. I think when this site plan was approved, that nobody actually went out and looked at it to see that this would be a potential issue. So from that standpoint, we looked at a two-dimensional piece of paper, not seeing elevation as being a potential issue. So that was, again, learning stages of this whole process that we were going through. If you go to page 17 of our document, the picture that he shows there, that elevation is about seven feet six inches approximately, and the thing that I observed, I actually went out there and I looked at the property. I went out there the day after, we had a day and a half of rain, and when we had one of those heavy rain days. I went out there the next day to look at it, and I observed no wetness. I looked in both that drain there and the drain to the north, there was no water in either one of them. They were both dry. When, I also took a picture, is it possible to pull up the one picture from the side view that I, that I'd taken?
That one?
Yep. So if you look at that picture right there, I'm looking from the north to the south, and so that, if you look at the grade of that, it's not as great. And so that, if you look at the grade of that, it's not as great as the original picture is. I think that it's not that, not that big of a grade. And it does go down to the back property line and then goes back up again to the open The last point I'm going to make is, a patio can be put there. Could you show the next picture that I had given you? This is 4903. That is their patio. And they're right at the corner, right by in the same building, two doors down from them, they're building a similar patio. So now look at the grade with the air conditioning vent there. And if you look at the grade compared to the other picture that I'd taken, they're very similar. So from my perspective, can a patio be put in there? Yeah, absolutely. That shows it right there. That can be done absolutely, without question. So, and like I said, there's a second one going in there. The problem is, is you've got 13 other residents in there, I'm sorry, 12 potential other residents in there, that once we approve a deck, that they're going to want to come back and say, well, wait a minute, you said no to me, why are you going to do this one? I observed no groundwater. I observed dry drains. I look at the angle of the slope of the property, it's no different than any other property there. I'm not seeing any issue with doing this type of project with it, as far as it's concerned. So I wanted to point that out. Because I just think this is a bad build. I'm not happy with it. So I feel bad for the residents.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCauley. Thank you for sharing your own facts that you discovered upon looking at it. Appreciate that. Any other commentary, questions, discussion from board members?
I just had a question, I guess, that, just so I'm aware, that's, you're talking this is the side of the house that was on?
No, that was the back.
That was on the back of the property, was a raised patio?
No, that's 4903. If you look at it on the map, on page of our map, if you look at page 10 of our map, if you look at it there, you can see that they have their driveway to one side, and that patio is to the back. So it's completely in the backyard. And also currently in the process of being built, there's one at 4887, also being built.
I'm having trouble putting my eyes on 4903.
It's at the corner when you come in from Beach Road. It's on your left-hand side, it's like the fifth one down.
Okay, yep, thank you.
So, and if you look at the height of that, that is very similar to the height of the applicant's height, too. Like I said, there's another one going in at 4887 currently, when I was there a couple weeks ago, right after a big rain.
So I guess a question I have off of that is, to that knowledge, do we know, so I'm seeing that there's obviously the larger horseshoe of houses around the outside of the build, and then there's the smaller horseshoe that all shares the same green space in their backyard. Do any of those yards have a raised patio?
There's only two.
In that inner horseshoe?
That I went through and observed them all. I know that if you look at, when you come in from Beach Road, everything on the left-hand side up to 4911, those are all raised and have no decks. If I look at 4919 going around the corner, those are all flat and they have patios going out. If I look at the inner part of the horseshoe there, there's not one deck on any one of those, and they're all raised.
Do any, I guess, do any of them currently have any type of porch, like patio?
Nothing.
Deck? So they all have the same drop?
Not, not, not.
From the back door?
4928 is more severe than the other ones. But that, they're probably only, and I'm going to guess from memory, three, four feet. Whereas if I looked at 4928, having seen these properties come to us already before, I knew that the ones that we had in front of us before that were like, at the very beginning on the left-hand side there, that those were raised a long way, similar to 4928. I wanted to look back and see what was done there, and that's when I discovered that the two patios, one completed, you know, one in process of being completed, were there.
And the patio, okay.
Yeah.
So then I want to make sure I understood you fully correctly. When it comes to that, the backyard that is shared with the property in question, 4928, are there any raised patios that connect to that backyard that is shared with 4928?
No.
So I find myself in a situation where I am, currently I'm at a point where I would want to approve this application. And the reason that I'd be in favor of the approval is because I understand that there are other properties in the neighborhood that had built the raised patio setup, but those properties don't have the applicants highlighted. And then there's been maps that have shown that there's a drainage situation that appears to be unique to that inner horseshoe. And when I'm thinking heavy concrete, I'm thinking heavy stone slabs, these outer houses may not suffer from that same issue in terms of the concrete shifting over time compared to the inner houses where, due to the drain that's there, there may be more problems that stem from having a heavy slab of concrete back there. So that's where I'm at currently. To me, because I'm gathering that a patio would not require a variance, a deck requires a variance, correct? So it's the fact that it's a deck that's bringing this all up. To me, seeing that this problem is not, has not, was not caused by any current or former residents, it was caused by, quite frankly, the city being new to the concept of clusters and the city not necessarily knowing to check all of the correct boxes when it came to cluster developments. It just seems silly to me. I don't see any tangible benefit that the city gets from enforcing the ordinance as written in this scenario. Because we have a group of residents that purchased a home with a developer that was new to clusters, with a city that was new to clusters. And I don't really see why they should have to go with a patio versus a deck in this scenario. To me, it's kind of like, I don't see the city getting a benefit from blocking a deck on these properties. But I digress.
Mr. McCauley?
A point of information, 4903 and 4911, right between, that's their reservoir. That's their storm drain reservoir. So if you want to talk about potential water, that also has that there more than the drain does. So that V-shaped area is their reservoir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I make one point of comment?
Yes.
Just to be clear, I want to make it clear that the issue about a structure setback in a rear yard is not solely for clusters, it's for any single-family residential district in the city. The difference between a cluster and a traditional lot is traditional lots have a larger setback. They're typically 35 feet to 45 feet. This case, it's only 25 feet versus a cluster. So the issue, the same rules would apply, the developer would have or should have known that the same rules apply regardless if it's a cluster lot or a standard city lot where you cannot encroach into the rear yard with a structure. So I want to make clear that this is not unique to cluster developments, this is a standard across all city lots.
Allow me to clarify the comment that I made previously. I guess what I mean by that is, the developer was going off of pretenses that they're typically used to with other developments that don't have the same smaller setbacks, or don't have the, sorry. The developer made an issue with the building envelope based on the fact that the cluster, the city didn't know to keep the building level with the grade, if that makes sense? Like, to me, I don't see anyone really messing up, other than the developer and the city, that they basically allowed the developer to build a hole in the wall, eight feet off the ground, with no ability to build a deck or a patio. Does that make sense? Or no ability to build a deck due to the zoning requirements? Like, I guess that, when I asked that question earlier, looking at the photo, like, that's where I'm kind of seeing this, is that at some point, a city engineer, a city staff member, somebody approved a plan that they shouldn't have, because they weren't looking at it in the way that, you know, taking into account the fact that a hole, an eight-foot drop was being built into the kitchen. I guess that's where I, when I look at that photo, I look at the situation, that's kind of where I'm seeing the mistake happening. And it's on the developer and the city, and to me, it's not on the resident, it's not on the owner. And that's why I would be in favor of granting this variance, is that it seems like certainly an exceptional circumstance, given the uniqueness of it all.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Again, in looking at the publicly available Google Maps, which is more updated than the Google Maps aerial view, that's more updated than the view that's on the screen, and seeing the patios that have been put in at the houses around the perimeter, they are significantly larger than what the applicant is requesting. And it has always amazed me that patios are treated differently than decks in our ordinance, because they have the exact same function and very similar aesthetics to the neighbors.
And they're more intrusive, not less.
Yeah. But I see this request as being significantly smaller than what was requested last time and very reasonable for what has been given to the situation that exists. Looking at the, switching back to our criteria for granting a variance, the exceptional characteristic that I see is the topography, clearly. There's a drop-off, it's a sloped property, having the front of the property aligned so that they can walk into the, walk into the main level, and then the back of the property has that eight, seven, eight-foot drop-off. Topography is the difficulty. B, it's related to this premises, it's not some other premises. C, it's not of a personal nature, it's reasonable to have a deck. Other, outdoor space that is impermeable surface. D, the characteristic that makes compliance must not have been created by the current or previous owner, it's the topography that is the difficulty. The topography existed well before the house did. And E, the proposed variance does not harmful or alter the essential character of the area. We've seen that through the letters from the neighbors and from the homeowners association. It does not have a negative influence to have a modest deck on the back of this house.
Is that a motion?
And for those reasons, I would make a motion to approve this. Second?
All right, so we have a motion for Mr. Eisenbacher to approve the variance request, seconded by Mr. Fox. We've already had some discussion on all the various elements. Are there any further comments? I guess I want to say a couple things. And these are sort of maybe, they cut in different directions. I, so I agree with a lot of what Mr., I agree a lot with what Mr. McCauley just said about how we've handled these in the past and being consistent. The one thing I do think is just different from, so he gave the example of, is it 4903, where they have the porch or the patio? The petitioner did submit a letter from a contractor who did say, I can't build this because I see drainage issues and I see, I just can't do the work. So I, from a factual perspective, I do think that distinguishes it, at least on the record we have, from some of these other homes that have been able to build patios. So that's, I guess, as I'm going to what's in the record, I think there is some evidence that the petitioner has provided that his property is different from the other properties for reasons that aren't related to, there were things beyond his control related to the topography, like Mr. Eisenbacher mentioned. I do struggle a little bit with D, however, on the motion that was just made, because I do think there is a sense in which we are, we're sort of maybe blaming the city and blaming the developer, and I think the developer does get some blame for this. But to some extent, the developer was a previous owner of the property at some level, who built the property. And I do think there is some sense in which a homeowner does purchase a property as it's built. And there is sort of some constructive knowledge of what, you know, the zoning ordinances of the city are. So I struggle with that because that's what they decided to build, that's how they decided to build. I know there was a 25-foot setback. The builder could have built it a smaller home with, you know, more room, I suppose. So I'm struggling with D being satisfied, because you could say this about all of the properties in the entire subdivision, that they was built to the edge of the setback. And I think, you know, we need to try to find the petitioner satisfying all five of the elements. So like I said, a couple of my thoughts are kind of in both directions on this one. It's kind of a difficult one, because we have seen this happen several times, the exact same issue. Yeah, Mr. Fox?
Yeah, and I think, as I'm the one who kind of brought up the role that the city played here, I don't necessarily want to say like, oh yeah, the city messed up, thus, you know, we should grant everything where the city makes a mistake. That's not necessarily what I'm getting at. I guess what I'm getting at here is that the city's role in this entire process was basically, the developer is going to build whatever they can build, whatever they can do. And it's the city's job to step in and say, hey, you should, you know, make sure you leave enough room for X, make sure you leave enough room for this. Basically, because of a situation where, again, it was a very fairly new program with clusters, it was a fairly unique scenario, where the developer built the building, again, with an eight-foot drop with a hole in the wall in the back. Like, at the end of the day, a mistake was made. You can't deny that a mistake was made at some point. And I don't necessarily think that this applicant's application should be denied because one of the parties of that mistake developed the house, if that makes sense. I think at a point, there were multiple factors, the city included, that should have also stepped in and caught this error before it was made.
Sure. Yeah, I appreciate that. And even if it's to the extent that a homeowner thinks that the developer misrepresented something about it, that could very easily happen. I just don't know that this is the venue for a homeowner to get redressed against a developer that misrepresented something. Otherwise, I think as Mr. McCauley said, we'd be here and having 13 other, potentially 13 other residents asking for the same relief. So anyway, that's, but I take your point, and it's a good point. All right, any other comments? I don't see any. I think we have, Mr. Eisenbacher?
The one thing, since we have Mr. Carlisle here and he's been instrumental in the writing of the zoning ordinance, the enforcement of it and such, for the cluster, was this cluster granted with a site bonus? Or was it, if you remember? Or was it just consolidating the number of sites that were allowed?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question, Mr. Eisenbacher. So I will note that, I'm going to answer your question, but first, I'm going to preface something first. The cluster has been amended since it was first adopted. We tweaked it based on lessons learned and some other things. We actually made it easier and more incentivized to do a cluster because it was perceived as a good development tool. This development received a density bonus based on the amount of open space that was included. So I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm guessing probably three additional lots were granted through the cluster process by preserving 30-something percent of open space versus what could have been done as a by right non-cluster development.
Okay, thank you. And I say that, living in a subdivision that was before the cluster but still has four open space parks, that I spent all days Saturday working in one of those parks, maintaining it and keeping it up for the enjoyment of the subdivision, it's good to have these open spaces. But obviously, had the developer known, he could have made each of the lots a little bit bigger. You look at all that empty space, especially behind this particular property, the space was available. The impact on the neighbors is not there. If this property didn't have the grade problem, I expect he would have already put in a patio and we would never have talked to him. and we would never have talked to him in the first place. The problem with the property is the grade, because he can't put in, based on the information we've received, can't put in a patio. And our city ordinance treats a deck different from a patio, so that's why we're here. And because we can give a variance for a grade problem, as is clearly defined, I believe it's appropriate with this request for a 10-foot deep, 10-foot deep deck to grant the variance. I mean, it seems pretty straightforward to me.
All right. Yes, Mr. McCauley.
I apologize, one more comment. Are we now taking letters from applicants that, somebody that says they want their business, that that's gospel? Because I don't see any report saying that this is unbuildable. I don't see any engineering report, I see no landscape architect report, I see nothing saying that. I see a guy that wants to build a deck, saying, "Hey, I can't put a patio in here because this is an issue." Well, let's make more money on a deck, and it's a lot easier to do. So, from my standpoint, I think we're taking this at face value, and there's no information there to support that a patio can't be put in there.
All right. Mr. Eisenbacher.
I'm curious if it would be appropriate to table the item to get additional information, then.
What additional information would you wanna see, Mr. Eisenbacher?
Basically, engineering information, or from the additional builders that turned down the applicant, because he only got one of his three builders that he spoke to, to say, to give us a testimony that they wouldn't build a patio there. Because if that's what the crux of the decision is gonna be based on, is if a stone patio is not buildable, or not. I mean, I think it's relatively difficult on sandy soil to put in a stone patio that's seven, eight feet tall.
Well, would you wanna, we want to recall the petitioner to ask him what additional information he might be able to provide?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
And see what he says. Sir, if you'd like to, unless anyone objects, I think, I think the question, as you've heard it, is, is there additional information, maybe from other contractors or engineering reports? What, if anything, would you be able to supplement to the board?
So, is it just another letter? Because I think he said the letter's not sufficient. What would you look for?
I think it's just, you know, you submitted one letter from one builder or contractor that you, that you engaged. How many other builders did you speak to?
Two additional ones. So, total of three.
Do you think that they would be, the other two would be willing to similarly write some sort of statement or representation about why they declined to? I don't wanna put words in your mouth, I think Mr. Eisenbacher is just trying to.
I mean, I can request, I don't know if they will or not, right? It's their judgment, because it's a sales thing for them, somebody's saying, "I'm coming to you for business," and you're saying you can't do it, but we can definitely request and ask it. But they were all pretty verbal about, because of the height, to get it an easy access out. Otherwise, you're looking at, you know, like, three, four steps to get out, and you already used up half your space. That, to go up that high, the weight and the stability, and like I said, if it's concrete, it's gonna crack, they would not get warranty for their work, if they did any work there, and if it's brick, it's gonna be just uneven. I mean, just with our front yard, which is a straight grade, they can't even keep that straight. The builders come back thrice to fix that up. Our step coming into the front door is not even stable. So, if it's something that's completely flat, not even in the backyard, which is graded, there's no way it's gonna stay stable. I mean, we can try to request them to give us letters, but it's just, I don't wanna say it's common sense, but it's just, it's eight, seven feet above, the other homes that you mentioned were three to four feet high, and they just put them out there, so we don't know what it's gonna be in a year from now, and what they face. But it was a completely different grading for those houses, homes that they were referring, referring earlier.
Okay, thank you. So, I guess the question would be, is there, would there need to be a motion, I guess, to table, based on what we've heard? If the board thinks it would be useful or appropriate to adjourn to the next meeting and allow a petitioner to submit additional information, or if we've heard what we've heard, and... I believe we have, already have a motion pending, so we'd have to deal with that motion first, perhaps, or?
Well, a motion to table would delay it, but we've never had a high level of evidentiary criteria, like a court of law would have, where we have to have, like, a certified expert presenting evidence. We've taken a lot of evidence at face value. I'm concerned if, if when a petitioner does present evidence from a builder, that we say, "Okay, your evidence is no good," I mean, and we base our decisions on that.
I, I mean, I think, I think it's our job as a board to take whatever evidence we have, from the petitioner, from what the city presents, from, and it's really up to us to weigh the credibility of the evidence. If, if, you know, we don't think a letter from a contractor has much merit, then, you know, those of us who don't think it has merit can not give it merit, if others of us think that. So, I'm just, I think it's up to us to weigh the credibility of what we have before us, so that's my view.
Okay.
So, I don't, I guess, not seeing any further discussion. This has been an interesting application tonight. So, we have a pending motion, Ms. Ferens, and this is a motion to grant from Mr. Eisenbacher, seconded by Mr. Fox. So, the motion to grant a yes would grant, and four votes would approve the motion and the variance. So, I think we are ready to vote.
Mr. McCauley?
No.
Mr. Bosnbrook?
No.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Motion passes, by four votes, and the variance is granted, sir?
Do we need four or five?
Yeah, that was four.
You have four, yes.
We have four, we have a majority of four that
Seven.
approved the variance request. Even though we had six here, and one vacancy, we have four granting, is that correct?
Yeah. You're right.
Not going crazy, all right?
Oh, we're good.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, sir, for coming out tonight, and the variance has been granted. We will then move on to, if I can find my agenda. Item number six, communications. I don't see any communications. I don't have any, Mr. Fox, may I have a planning commission update?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, planning commission, there was continued conversations, I believe, about parking requirements at our previous meeting. So, yeah, any interested residents who are interested in taking a look at what we're talking about, please feel free to swing by.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fox. Item number seven, don't see any miscellaneous business on the agenda tonight. We'll open it up for any public, final public comment? No, yes, Mr. McCauley?
I'm gonna make a public comment, because I've made a public comment before when we first started getting these in front of us from Park Manor. I understand that we don't wanna question every builder, every contractor coming in here, what they have, but we have a letter basically from somebody, I don't know who they are, and they're not here to support it, or talk about it, or do anything. So, I look at it as, I can write a letter, because I wanna build a deck, but, and I don't wanna have to do a patio. So, from my standpoint, I don't, I want documentation, I want showing plans, I want something coming in that makes sense, so that way we've done our due diligence and not just say, "Oh, yeah, he said, it's no good, can't put a patio, and I can put a deck in." I'm not, that's not how I wanna do business. And I was going back, I'll be honest with you, I was going back and forth on this, because I think this is, I'm glad he's got a deck, from that standpoint. But in the same breath, I'm looking at everything that's going on around it, it's gonna be a mess. So, self-created mess.
Yep. Thank you. Mr. McCauley? Yes, Mr. Desmond?
I just said, I guess, question, is city staff is kinda shooting in the dark, so I don't know if you'll have an answer, but is there any kind of, what is the justification between treating decks and patios differently? Because there's, I mean, there are unconditioned spaces that seem pretty much identical, like, so what is the reasoning on that?
There's a, there's a, there's a valid zoning and building reason. I don't, I wanna stay, I don't wanna get myself or the city in trouble by. Some of those, some of those patios that were shown, I would think are more like terraces than patios, but from a basic patio at grade, has much less of an impact from a massing standpoint than a deck would. And primarily, the difference in requirement is because a deck requires a footing, and that's why it's considered a structure.
Still substantially less concrete.
And it's attached to, it's physically attached to the building, it's to the principal building itself. That's why it's also considered a structure.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, thank you.
But, but I will say, looking at the views of those patios, they were pretty, they were substantially impactful as compared to what a deck may be.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, no more public comment, then we are adjourned, and have a great evening, and see you next month.
How often do you get out there?
Well, yeah. I spend fourteen hours on Saturday, chipping trees.
They got speakers that hurt.
And I wanna talk to you. Well, you don't wanna talk to me. I maintain those parks he's talking about.
Thanks, Jackie.
Take care.
Take care.
Bye, Mr. Fox.
Anybody else want to look at that site besides me? Does any?
I can hear your question.
Years ago.
Anybody else want to look at that site besides me?
I went going on years ago.
Okay.
That's the one he took to the certificating office.
Yeah, that was like, that was before they had, I think they just put it off.
No, you're all set. Have a great travel home.
Oh, I was sorry, yeah, I forget, it was the second one here.